Again, let me apologize for the delay. We will begin the meeting right now. I'm calling the St. Louis County Council Meeting to order Tuesday, August 24th, 2021. It is now 6:47 PM. Would you please join in the pledge of allegiance?
Three, two, one. I pledge the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Matt, first please, call right.
Councilmember Days. Councilmember Dunaway.
Here.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Webb.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We will, the journals of the meetings of August 10th and August 17th have not been finalized. Councilwoman Webb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I make a motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of adopting and presenting a resolution honoring Mr. Antonio Morgan for receiving the Carnegie Medal Award to citizens who enter extreme danger while saving and/or attempting to save the lives of others, and for the purposes of presenting the Carnegie Medal to Mr. Morgan.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, Councilwoman Webb, you want to read the resolution?
Do we have to vote?
No, you can just vote. Resolution number two this evening, Madam Chair, introduced by councilmembers Webb, Days, Fitch, Harder, Tracus, Clancy, and Dunaway. Resolution, whereas Antonio Morgan is the recipient of a Carnegie Medal honoring his heroic efforts in saving the life of a fellow St. Louis Countyan, and whereas the Carnegie Medal is given throughout the United States and Canada to those who enter extreme danger while saving or attempting to save the lives of others. And whereas on July 28th, 2020, a highway accident left a 23-year-old motorist unresponsive inside his vehicle with the driver's side against the highway center median. And whereas Antonio Morgan bravely responded after the impacted vehicle caught on fire, and he entered the vehicle in an attempt to rescue the unresponsive motorist. And whereas after many attempts and encouragement from bystanders to exit the vehicle, Antonio Morgan continued his attempts and was eventually successful in releasing the motorist from his seatbelt and removing him from the burning vehicle. And whereas the victim has stated, quote, "I feel like that was my second opportunity at life, and now it's time for me to show the world my change. I can't thank him enough. He will always be a part of my life and my family's life. That's a good man," end quote. And whereas Antonio Morgan is the husband of 16 years to Jalen Morgan and the father of three children, Jemaya Morgan, Antonio Morgan II, and Aaron Morgan. And whereas for the past 16 years, Antonio Morgan has provided automotive services plus many more trades in the St. Louis area. And whereas Mr. Morgan is committed to helping his neighbors and all St. Louis Townians, and has aided countless people stuck on highways, byways, in a need of his many services. And whereas Mr. Morgan has undoubtedly fulfilled his goal of spreading love and positively influencing all around the world. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council honors Mr. Antonio Morgan and congratulates him upon being awarded a Carnegie Medal. Section two, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Mr. Antonio Morgan as a permanent token of the Council's sincere esteem and recognition of his heroic efforts.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say, I'm sorry, roll call.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
I don't think we can hear you.
Is that me? Is that me?
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number two, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries resolution number two. Number two has been adopted. Thank you, Madam Chair. All right. Thank you, everyone, for joining me and giving much deserved applause to Mr. Morgan. I say he is my brother's keeper, and Mr. Antonio, excuse me, Mr. Robinson, because you are the walking testimony and miracle standing here before us. So you are witnessing a miracle because this heroic act and being unselfish and caring about your brother was something that we all need to be a witness of. I'm so grateful that Mr. Robinson is here to enjoy this with us and give Mr. Morgan his much deserved flowers for all of the sacrifice. But even more importantly, I want to make sure that you all know that this has created an unbreakable bond of friendship between these two gentlemen and their families. So, Mr. Morgan, I present to you the Carnegie Medal. This medal is very rare. Since 1904, all across this nation, only 10,238 people have received this award. So this is few and far between. It's very rare, but his acts was rare. His unselfish love was rare. His sacrifice was rare. So sir, I present this award to you today. Thank you so much for allowing us to sharing this with you. Would you like to say anything?
I appreciate y'all for honoring me, and I appreciate the Carnegie Hall, me the award. Glad Keenan can still be with us today now. Appreciate I had the strength to get him up out of there.
Just want to say thank y'all for being here.
I can't thank him enough. I smile every day, because I wouldn't be here without him. Time for a change. Respect the unity, man. It's time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilmembers Clancy and Dunaway, while we finish this presentation, can you confirm that you can hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, Kevin.
Thank you.
I can hear you.
Thank you. Dr. Page, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Thank you.
All right, Diane had promised to put some Kleenex down there, because that's a tear-jerker moment there. It really was, so. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, so we will move to zoning matters. On zoning matters, item number one, third district.
Hold on, please. Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, fourth district.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number three, fourth district.
Receive and file.
So ordered. Item number four, fifth district.
You're on mute.
Receive and file.
So ordered. Item number five, sixth district.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number, oh, I'm sorry, moving to other communications, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply to item number three as well, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Receive file, and the appropriate transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number five.
Receive file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number six, second district.
Receive, file, and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number seven, second district.
Receive, file, and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number eight, sixth district.
Receive, file, change of owner be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number nine, sixth district.
Receive, file, change of owner be approved as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number 10, first district.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number 11, first district.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 12, first district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, fourth district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number 14, fifth district.
Receive and file.
So ordered. Item number 15, fifth district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 16.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply to item number 20, and that will be the order.
Item number 21, seventh district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 22, first district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the city of Welston, and that will be the order.
Item number 23, first district.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 24.
This communication is from the county executive concerning sending back bill number 218 to the council with a recommendation, in essence, of veto. Receive and file the communication, be entered into the journal of the council. And in regards to, well, let's stop there. I just want to let everybody know that early on that our county councilors recommended that we, and I'll read from their letter of July 27th. Ms. Orwick says, "I'm aware that some members of the council would feel more comfortable with outside counsel. After discussing this with many of you, I acknowledge that these are unique circumstances. Given these circumstances, I concur that hiring outside counsel is appropriate, and that per the charter and ordinances, I plan to hire a Mr. Smith as outside counsel for this matter after approval of the council." So that was a letter that was sent to the council back in July 27th. So we went by that recommendation. We passed, we tried to pass the bill. It was vetoed, so now we're where we are right now. So, and in regards to bill number 218, 2021 pursuant to section 2.110 of the St. Louis County Charter, I move the question, shall the ordinance pass the objections of the county executive, thereto notwithstanding?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Discussion.
I'm sorry, discussion. Who's first? Councilwoman Webb.
Yes, ma'am. So I wanted to speak up on this legislation. We have been through a lot of conversations about attorneys and the fees for attorneys, and we have worked with the attorneys to ensure that, I'm sorry, everybody. Every time I took a breath in, I was, I couldn't get my words out. So we have been working with the county councilors' office on a number of occasions on trying to make sure that we give them the appropriate staffing that they need in order to execute their job. We trying to build a relationship that supports, that the county council's office supports all of us, the county executive and the council. And so with that being shared, I voted some time ago to include five more attorneys for the county councilor's office, so that they can have adequate staff. And I said then that whether it's a benefit to me or not, I am in favor of building up our county council's office so that they can do their job with excellence and with quality, and I'm not supportive of external attorneys. So I wanted that to be known, and I wanted to kind of give you that background, because this is a conversation that has been ongoing. This is about building trust and working together. And so, Madam Chair, I will be voting not to overturn the county executive's veto.
Thank you very much. Discussion, Councilman Fitch?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This is interesting, because it's the Ethics Committee doing this investigation in this particular situation here, where Sam Page's own county counselor is the one that told this council, "Go out and get outside counsel." So we tried to do that, and he ignored her recommendation. We often get criticized that we do not follow the advice of the county councilor's office. Well, this is a situation where the county executive is not following the advice of the county counselor. So we will certainly write that into the books and show that it's not just us that disagree with the county council, or even the county executive. Who can hire and fire Ms. Orwick has disagreed with her. And so that's what he did, is he said, "Guess what, counsel? You cannot investigate me. Not with an outside attorney, you can't." So that's what his veto is about, and that's what his letter was about. So I will obviously be voting to override the veto. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Yeah, I've consistently supported outside counsel for the county, but I was hopeful that this piece of legislation would lead to an agreement, a broader agreement about working with outside counsel, but it appears that that's not the case. And I do think the county executive makes some compelling points in his veto letter that we should not approach this in a piecemeal fashion. So I will not be voting in favor of overriding the veto.
Any further discuss? Thank you, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Clancy, any further discussion? Roll call, please. And by the way, let me just get, make sure that we have the appropriate order this evening. It will be Dunaway, Webb, Tracus, Days, Fitch, Harder, and Clancy. That is the voting order for this evening.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Webb. Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, I am changing Councilmember Webb's vote to no.
Thank you.
So on the motion, there are three ayes, two noes, and two abstentions.
And with that, I believe that it has to have seven, five in order to pass, so the motion fails.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Fitch.
If I could just add, this does not end the investigation. All it means is that the attorney goes back to the county councilor's office instead of an outside attorney, just so you understand. Is, did I get that right, Madam Chair?
You did.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, moving on to add-ons. Item number one, first district.
Receive, file, and refer to the council as a committee of the whole, and that will be the order.
Item number two, third district.
Receive, file, and refer to the county executive.
So ordered.
Item number three.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. The same motion will apply to item number four, and that will be the order. We are now ready for our public forum portion of our meeting. As all of you, many of you have been here before, you understand the rules and regulations of what we are going through right now. We will have, bring your name, when you come forward, your name, your zip code for the record. You will have three minutes to give your position, and then we will move forward. Please, please, we are to be respectful of others. We want to make sure we hear everyone's point of view, and we can only do that if we have some modicum of respect for others. So with that, Mr. Clark, please call the roll. Please call the first speaker.
Madam Chair, our first speaker this evening is Joe Bannister, followed by Shannon Cox.
By the way, the three-minute rule still applies. She's go, well, I guess I thought.
Okay. My name's Joe Bannister. I live in 63122. Councilman Fitch is my councilman. County executive, Madam Chair, members of the county council, I have three issues this evening. We taxpayers paid for a new family court building and Proposition P for the police. The family court building was a disaster financially and continues to operate from a cost point of view very inefficiently. However, my issue is with the St. Louis County Family Court, and I spoke with Ben Burkhemper, the court administrator, explaining that anyone who takes a class can become a certified divorce mediator. The backgrounds are not verified, nor how many cases a person states they have completed. They simply, without penalty, become a family court insider and get professional courtesy from the members of the court as a perk. His response is they don't have a budget to verify the applications. If I recall correctly, the family courthouse cost us taxpayers a very large sum of money. And now we are allowing unqualified and possible lying lawyer wannabes to become certified divorce mediators. Family Matters and families matter and deserve better when they are going through a divorce. They deserve professionalism and respect. Did anyone see the GAL video on YouTube saying that they all protect each other's back? Are the KMOV family court corruption story? It's worth checking out. It might not be a local issue either. Maybe the Secretary of State would need to be involved. Next point. Secondly, the Veil Profit Order is a city-based nonprofit organization. Most members are from St. Louis County. They refer to themselves as a civic organization. When they hold events in St. Louis County and St. Louis City, do our police departments in St. Louis County work the events, and/or do they get paid to work secondary? I am concerned average taxpayers is paying for protection. While we are in this heavy crime wave regionally, why are the police officers protecting only one class of citizens? I am from a family of St. Louis City police officers, and yes, my dad's uncle was chief of police. I am pro-police. What I am recommending is private security protect private events. The Veil Profit does not produce economic impact, like the Cardinals or the Blues, where our officers work secondary. That I understand. Lastly, I presented interim presiding Judge Barbara Ott with information regarding a member of the St. Louis County Court being the wife of a Veil Profit member. Many law firms today put out inclusion and diversity statements, but attorneys are in a leadership position within the VP. I am sorry, but I want a court system free of corruption by a civic organization. Would the county executive be willing to present my remarks to the mayor or her chief of staff as well? And then I have just, how much time? Oh, that was my three minutes.
Thank you so much.
So I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shannon Cox, followed by Louise Kingsbury.
Hi, Shannon Cox, 63011. I first wanted to talk about opening up the public forum by taking away part of our time for virtual. I don't think, I've been all over the county, school board meetings, events, and actually a lot of people that do not see eye to eye with me politically are out and about and willing to sign the petition to recall Sam Page. They're going to the school board meetings with their masks on, no problem. They're at Walmart in their space suits. So I feel like they should be able to come in here and speak like the rest of us who have taken our time away from our family and friends to do so. But just in case there are people out there that are fearful to come, we now have a website, recallsampage.org, where you can actually print the petition and mail it to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Louise Kingsbury, followed by April Lenenbauer.
I'm 63011. One of the reasons I'm still coming here and have been here the last several weeks, and it's brand new for me to do this, is because of the disdain that has been shown for the group of people in this room from a few council members, and that just shocks me. This past two years, I've learned how much I don't know about our government and its workings. These meetings have been quite an education, giving me respect for those who value and follow the Constitution and will stand up for our constitutional rights versus those of you who don't. For weeks now, a plethora of documents and facts have been presented and handed to you. It seems none of this matters to some on this council. If facts and truth don't matter, what does? Why are you listening so closely to a very few doctors and scientists rather than the thousands of experienced and documented scientists who disagree with Dr. Fauci, the CDC, and the WHO? 27,000-plus doctors are currently fighting the lies about the vaccine and masks. These are doctors and scientists who are not paid by the government or Gates or Soros, but have risked their reputations, their jobs, and even their lives to tell the truth. Anyone who puts it all on the line for humanity deserves to be listened to. You mentioned two weeks ago that 200 St. Louis doctors signed that everyone should be vaccinated or wear masks. Why should we believe you? You don't believe us. You'll need to show the proof. It became clear many months ago that only the uninformed would believe a mask is any form of protection. If this council accurately investigates the masks, you will not be able to reach any other conclusion. I hope you are informed enough to know that Dr. Fauci wrote a paper around 2005 about the 1918 Spanish Flu, stating it was not the flu that killed hundreds of thousands, it was the masks which caused people to get sick and die of pneumonia. Masks. Why would anyone choose to wear one when all the data shows they do nothing but make you sick, make children sick? Have you not seen the data of what is found in a mask a child has worn all day at school? Some of you think those in this room are selfish and uncaring for their neighbor. Some of you think those in this room are selfish and uncaring for their neighbor. I think some of you are selfish and uncaring for the many children suffering untold consequences due to the masks. Anyone pointing out the truth is being vilified and silenced, just as a few on this council want to do to those who come to these meetings. Just as you don't believe what we are saying is the truth, I don't believe your statements about hundreds being afraid of coming to this chamber is the truth. Prove it. Send us the emails. If there really is a dangerous pandemic, why aren't we hearing ambulances all through the day and night? Why are all the statistics saying the death rate was within normal parameters last year? Why aren't all of us in this room dead? Why aren't all the homeless dead? Why aren't the funeral homes overrun with dead bodies? Why aren't all the protesters and rallygoers dead?
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is April Lenenbauer, followed by Zina Hackworth.
Hi, my name is April Lenenbauer, and I live in area, zip code 63043. Good evening, county council and Sam Page. I'm directing my comments tonight and probably for the next few weeks directly to Sam Page. Sam Page, please save yourself in St. Louis County. Resign already. Zina, 2020, and throughout the last year, I kept asking my husband, do you really think Sam Page thinks he's doing what's best for St. Louis County, or do you think he has other motives? He said he didn't know. Well, after I did some checking, I know now it's other motives. Sir, you cannot be in politics or any profession that I know of and not be a team player. Negotiations is part of it. You, sir, have not, you are not only incapable of that, you try everything in your power to make others look bad when you don't get your way. You refuse to work with anyone. It is unbelievable. I know that you are untouchable. I know you think that you're untouchable, but the walls are starting to close in, and they will continue. With, you can only keep lids on so many pots before they will all explode. Get out now while you can. This council has tried, and they continue to try to work with you. The court tried to work with you. Nope, you still refuse. Last year, the other counties and the city tried to work with you, and then it became apparent that you were only going to be, do it your way, and they left. Do you see a pattern here? So you're not what we need in St. Louis County. We need a leader, and you, sir, are no leader. Some questions I would like addressed from you. Where is Doctor/Mr. Khan? What was your agreement with him that you were going to throw him under the bus so he could make up a story about discrimination? And that then you would say you're investigating and send him on an extended vacation? Then I'd also like to know, one way or another, how many actual hours you work at Mercy? Why are you trying to hide it? It makes everybody want to know even more. I would think your position that you were elected to do would be a full-time job in itself. If you're not doing it full-time, then you need to step down so we can get someone that can devote their time to it. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Zina Hackworth, followed by Marla Fastenow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Zina Hackworth, 63129. My first comment is to Lisa Clancy. Apparently, you don't know anything about the Constitution, so I just want to read the First Amendment, and I ask you to read it yourself as well, because apparently you haven't. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press or of the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievance. To Kelly Dunaway, I'd like to say, thank you. Thank you so much for inviting all of us to come back every single week to stand against your mask mandates and to stand against your tyranny. We will not stand for tyranny, which you are a tyrant. So thank you for inviting us to come back every single week and say we will not comply and no mask mandates or vaccine or shots or anything else mandating the American people. To Sam Page, last week, you said that we are welcoming refugee, Afghan refugees here in St. Louis County. I welcome Afghan refugees, but I would like to have the Americans who are stuck in Afghanistan to be back here first. And then, Madam Chair, can you please still talk to them about the water? Because we really need to be able to bring water in. Can you talk with Dave Ryan, the person? Because we're being, I'm being told two different things. You're telling me one thing. Security is telling me something different. So if you all can come to an agreement, because we all need to have water. Some of us have issues where we need, I mean, we're not going to bring soda or anything else in. So if you would please do that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marla Fastenow, followed by Shannon Robinson.
Hello, Marla Fastenow, 63011. I was at the July 27 council meeting, and I spoke. I wasn't able to come in person the next three weeks, but I watched on my phone. Last week, I could have come, but I decided not to. I was probably feeling sorry for myself. I had dropped my youngest one off at college and just didn't have it in me. So I got, went to my bedroom, started watching on my phone again, and then I just got angry at myself. I got angry at myself for not driving down. I got angry at myself for not showing up. As I listened to council members go back and forth on another mask mandate, I just kept getting madder and madder. Then I listened to council members go back and forth on how to handle public comments, and I just kept getting mad. I wasn't mad about the discussion. In all honesty, it was probably the most some of you all had spoken to each other in weeks, so that was a good thing. But I was mad about the tone in the meeting, the condescending tone of Ms. Dunaway and Ms. Clancy and how you treated your peers. Yes, they are your peers. Regardless of if you think you are above them, you are not. I was thankful that Councilman Harder asked about the investigation into Dr. Khan and about the possibility of going into a closed session to get an update. However, I didn't appreciate the snarky comment from you, Dr. Page, when you told Mr. Harder that you appreciated his enthusiasm, but you were going to follow the law. Well, I guess there's a first time for everything. What I, what, what I watched transpire over the last three weeks is what brought me here tonight. I coach club volleyball, 12- and 13-year-old girls, sixth graders, middle school, put in perspective. Most of my players have just gotten their first cell phone. For those of you with older kids, I'm sure you remember how much kids are on their cell phones when they first get them. It's a lot. But I don't think we give kids enough credit, though, because these 12-year-old girls that I coached, they know when they come into practice, or we have a team meeting, or we're at a team dinner. They know the first thing they do is they put their cell phones away and they pay attention. They are 12, and they have already figured this out. Since I've watched remotely the last three weeks, there has been one thing that has bothered me more than anything else I have mentioned. Why is it that during public comments, our county executive, county counselor, councilmember Dunaway, and Clancy cannot figure out the same thing that middle-school girls with a new cell phone know? That when you're in a meeting, you put your phones away? I respect the decision that you have made to stay home if you truly feel it is safe not to be in council chambers. What I don't respect is the fact that if you were here seated in front of me right now in the chambers, I don't believe you'd be in the middle of a group text. So I don't understand why you think that's acceptable to do from home. You're still working. You're still at a meeting. You owe your constituents the common courtesy of at least pretending to pay attention. Whether you're group texting or you're playing Candy Crush, I find it disrespectful that you don't have the common courtesy to put your phones away during the meetings. And I would like to respectfully ask that you do just that going forward, because I believe all of you can behave at least as well as my 12-year-old volleyball players. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shannon Robinson, followed by Austin Connor.
Shannon Robinson, 63025. We've been here for four weeks hearing masks work. They don't work. Vaccines work. They don't work. But honestly, that is not the real issue at hand here in St. Louis County. The problem is the overstepping control of the government and one man illegal rule and the lack of respect for individual rights. We have been mocked. We've been laughed at, called names viewed as disease-spread neckers, all because we want the right to choose what is best for us and for our children. Being a concerned parent is now scoffed at? Why is that looked down upon now? All I want is for you, my local government, to stay in your lane. Allow me to parent. Allow me the freedom I've been given to make choices for myself and for my family for decades. I drew a line in the sand, and you, Dr. Page, and those that support you have crossed that line over and over and over again, and the proof is the fact that we're all standing here, talking about health directors who lie to the public in the media about being pushed and then proven wrong in the video with zero apology or resignation. Dr. Page spending millions of dollars in a PR firm to essentially be his campaign team, spending hundreds and thousands on outside counsel to fight lawsuits, Dr. Page, you bring on yourself by breaking the law, while you veto the option for the council to use outside counsel as well. We have some council members who talk down, who condescend the constituents with such disrespect that you should be ashamed. We have parents not able to make choices for their children in schools about masks, and even some parents who don't even have the ability to make choices for their own body regarding vaccines. And we even have either self-appointed fact-checkers during our council meetings or Page-appointed fact-checkers to every speaker up here on Twitter and Facebook. But it's all in the name of COVID, so it's okay, right? All the corruption, all the lies, the dissent, the disrespect, the parents' inability to be in charge of their children's health at school, that's all okay, because that's what it feels like. The main problem we have in this county is the lack of trust we have for our county leaders and the abundant amount of control we have from them. Sam Page is a loophole fanatic who is dishonest. He has shown zero integrity or transparency, but that's okay, right, because of COVID? I'm tired of COVID overriding everything in my life. We had balance for a few months here, and it was good, and we need to continue to have balance. And I want to point out, this was never political for me, ever, but Dr. Page, you messed with my kids. So now you have to deal with me. You have no idea the pain you have caused thousands of county kids, and for you to ignore the fact is turning your back on them. And I'm not giving up. Even when no one else wants to act, I will. Dr. Page, you should have left sports alone and our children alone. But you woke up some sleeping giants, and we will not go down easy. And that was your biggest mistake, was picking a fight with mothers. I will show up every week to defend the voiceless children you claim to care about, the group that is the least vulnerable, the least affected, but the most restricted. The more questions we have, the less answers we receive. And the longer this goes on without giving citizens data about what is happening around us, the more we will continue to have questions. We will continue to hold you, Dr. Page, accountable, as well as the council, for these questions we are not giving answers to. We will continue to demand the county charter laws to be upheld. We will continue to demand our rights to be upheld. And as Councilwoman Dunaway said last week, I will propose a mask mandate every week until it passes. Well, ma'am, we will continue to show up every week until you remember where your place is. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Austin Connor, followed by William Hermanson.
Austin, 63026. I wonder what the news articles will have to say about this meeting tomorrow. If one thing never changes, it's probably that the journalists will find the one craziest guy here and quote him out of context to demonize the whole room. But the FDA's decision may be what spurs on more vaccinations. It may be also what spurs on more vaccine mandates. I believe these mandates are both unnecessary, unethical, or both, are all unnecessary, unethical, and unconstitutional. Let people choose for themselves. But I don't think that you'll listen to us, so I'd like to draw attention to the FDA and Pfizer's conflict of interests. James C. Smith, he's the chairman of the Reuters Foundation, Reuters, an outlet of news and fact-checking. James Smith is a member of Pfizer's Board of Directors. The former head of the FDA, Scott Gottlieb, or Gottlieb, I can't, sorry if I butchered his name, but he's a board member of Pfizer, too. And the acting commissioner right now of the FDA is the same person instrumental in approving OxyContin for children as long as, as young as 11 years old. OxyContin. When that was first approved in the 90s, the FDA regulator of that time who approved it later got a lucrative job with Purdue Pharma, the same company that made OxyContin. That's right, safe and effective, huh? Every time the FDA says something is safe and effective, I'm always skeptic because of OxyContin, among other things. Because that drug alone has caused so much death, addiction, and broken homes all over America, but it brought the FDA and Purdue Pharma nothing but profits. It's the same drug that caused the addiction my dad still struggles with and the same drug that killed my mother. And they were prescribed that drug, approved by the FDA after they had accidents, safe and effective. And whether or not the vaccine works, it's unethical to mandate a drug or treatment that was approved by a system so neck-deep in corruption. I held out for the FDA approval, too, probably like many others. I was hoping the FDA could at least have waited for Pfizer's ongoing studies to end instead of pushing this now. But I'm a man of my word, unfortunately. Just like I told you, I'd keep coming back. I promised my friends and family that I'd get it once it was FDA-approved. I might be in one of the risk groups for myocarditis from the vaccine, but I'm not in the risk group for COVID. And I got the shot Saturday. If the more far-fetched theories prove true, then I have nothing more important to lose except my countless friends and family members. Please don't mandate the vaccine.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is William Hermanson, followed by Oleg Karin.
William Hermanson, 63011. There really is a lot we can agree upon. We agree that God exists and created man. Because God exists, man exists. We agree on a creator or providence, as the founding fathers put it. Men and women came to populate the original American colonies and created societies. When the government of the colonies by Great Britain became intolerable, the people got together and declared their independence. We all agree. In the Declaration of Independence, they declared the divine origin of man and that God has given man certain rights. And at the end of this declaration, it's clear that the former colonies are now identified as sovereign states. Let me quote, "And that as free and independent states, they have full power to levy war, conclude peace, contract alliances, establish commerce, and do all other things and acts and things which independent states may have right do." Thus, states then decided to form a compact among themselves and created a constitution supporting that compact. The states delegated limited and enumerated powers and specifically reserved for themselves all other rights and powers. We agree on the facts of these documents. This constitution for the United States of America creates a federated republic unlike any before in history, for the states and citizens have retained their rights. The government that was formed can govern only consistent with law and by consent of the governed. Thus, actions taken by the government consistent with law have the consent of the governed. What if the government creates unjust or illegal laws? Well, if the governed give consent, then they must live under unjust laws. If the people do not want illegal or unjust laws, they must not give their consent. The same is true for the states. Would we not all agree with this? This is the structure and limitation of our government. Now we face the situation where a governmental body, representatives of the people, are giving consideration to creation of laws that directly infringe on the individual rights never delegated to our government. Thus, these are illegal or unjust, and those of us who understand this do not give our consent. And that is demonstrated first in a forum like this, in open discourse, and then it is demonstrated in noncompliance with the illegal or unjust law if necessary. This action is built right into the structure of our republic. So the big question becomes, as American citizens enjoying rights under our Constitution and elected to represent those that elected you, why would you attempt to enact laws that are- that are knowingly illegal or unjust?
Our next speaker is Oleg Karin, followed by Kim Langer.
Good evening. My name is Oleg Karin, 63114. I'm a controlled environment professional. Such professionals provide factual data to the health and safety experts, facility managers, doctors, and so on. I provided, in my like 25 years of work, provided thousands of certifications, facility designs, and studies to a variety of pharma companies like Pfizer, Mark, and different places. Controlled environment engineers use very special equipment, not used for any other purposes, and possess a deep knowledge of standards and technical expertise. Sometimes doctors or health and safety professionals base their decisions and guidance on assumptions which can cause a real disaster. They think they know the facts, but in reality, it's rarely the case. Filtration is one of the most critical part of my work. I'm familiar with filtration capacity of masks, not by taking a guess, but know it as a fact. So efficiency of a surgical or cotton mask is negligent to affect penetration of inner aerosol particle. With a perfect fit, with no gaps, a surgical mask may provide an efficiency of 10-plus percent for .5 micron and larger particles, but almost none for the smaller typical aerosol particles. And the way everybody is wearing those masks completely nullifies any possible advantage of mask application. Almost 100% of inhaled and exhaled air travels through the fabric or the gaps. A rule of thumb, if you are wearing a mask and can't smell any kind of smoke, the mask is completely useless and serves only decorative purpose. People who insist on application of masks for general public don't know the facts and deny actual science. Masks are used for special purposes in pharmaceutical industry, IV pharmacies, or hospitals, but it's got nothing to do with containment of virus particles. It is also very sad that CDC is using faulty studies as a proof of their guidance. Even a quick look at their references raises too many questions, even for a person not related to any science. Recommendation of mask-wearing is based on misinformation and is, in fact, very dangerous. Let me explain why. People with compromised immune system or other health issues or problems listen to those experts and truly believe if everybody around is wearing masks, they're safe, which is not the case at all.
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
False sense of security may cause a real danger for those people, because in reality, there is no, zero protection for those people.
Our next speaker is Kim Langer, followed by Leslie Fogarty.
Hi, Kim Langer, 63146. I just brought some reading material for the council. It's the Nuremberg Code, which is very, very important. It's got 10 parts to it, but I think the first sentence of the first part is the most important. The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential. Consent, not coercion, very, very important. And on the second page, I have three sites you can go to that list literally documented thousands of vaccine injuries, because injury is happening and it's not being reported. Also, I have something to address Ms. Clancy. There's a website, clancyforstl.com, and on that it states Lisa has been a champion of your right to make the decisions about what happens to your body. So I'm just wondering if that applies overall or just when she's working with Planned Parenthood?
Our next speaker is Leslie Fogarty, followed by David Minahan.
Leslie Fogarty, 63135. I forwarded to the council this morning some information and a link to the number-one healthcare podcast by Sean Stevenson. Sean grew up in Ferguson and has an incredible story. He was diagnosed with a degenerative spinal disease at a young age and became a clinician, trainer, and understands how the body works. Sean's latest podcast, episode 506, titled Anxiety, Fear, and the Risk of Death from COVID, is the fear killing us is of specific interest. You can listen via a podcast app or on his website, www.themodalehealthshow.com. No, I don't get paid to endorse him, I don't even know him, but I listen to him as he breaks things down into easily understandable terms, and it doesn't cost a thing to listen to it. The government wants to dictate our health and our lives, and it is doing more harm than good. People need to quit being a victim and take control over their own health and life. Government is never the answer to anything. They want to give you something, but in exchange, they take away more valuable things like liberty and freedom. Is anyone paying attention to what is happening in Australia? They cannot watch a sunset. They can only go outside for one hour per day for exercise. They cannot cross a state line. So if there is a hospital over their state line that's two minutes away, and the hospital in their state line is two hours away, they have to go to that hospital. They are rounding up children for mass inoculations. Look it up. This is why we refuse to comply, because for each inch we give, the government takes a mile. I did, I did see an article in West News Magazine where Chairperson Days is trying to get clarification into the care spending by Page that went to organizations who apparently are helping his reelection campaign and/or George Soros, so thank you for that. I hope you keep us updated. We must continue to come to fill this gallery, watch online, send emails, and keep an eye on what our government is doing all of the time, not just when there's one issue that we don't like. Our country is where it is because we all fell asleep at the wheel. The people need to take back control and hold our elected officials accountable. This is bigger than Democrat versus Republican. There are sinister things going on around this world, and it is good versus evil. It's just that simple.
Our next speaker is David Minahan, followed by Matthew Shepper.
David Minahan, 63017, District 3. First, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Clancy and Councilwoman Dunaway, as well as County Executive Dr. Page, for standing up for American values and American lives against those forces in our society which would spread lies and condemn innocent lives to needless harm and death. Let's talk tonight about the real-world effect of masking to fight COVID-19. The best example I've seen of this is the nation of Taiwan. This tiny island country of 23 million has very crowded cities full of people in close proximity, but they started masking as soon as the pandemic began, and their COVID death toll up until May 2021 stood at 11. Not 11,000, not 1,100, 11 people total. They had all but eliminated COVID through masking alone. They masked during SARS in 2003, and they saw that it worked, and that virus was completely eradicated from the face of the earth. So now they do the same thing, and it works again. They are model and proof that masking as a method of controlling COVID works, period. If we had all masks in the beginning of this pandemic, it would have been over long ago, and we'd be back to our normal lives. In fact, if last winter has shown us anything, it's that we have it within our ability to eliminate influenza just through masking, if only we have the societal will and courage. Those who are afraid of masking often feel that way because they're afraid of big government. A mask mandate is not big government. A mask mandate is the bare minimum of protection from a deadly pandemic. Anyone who thinks a mask mandate is invasive should read up on how the federal government, as well as various local and state governments, have treated people throughout our history in the name of public health. During the 1918 influenza epidemic, the 1906 New York typhoid outbreak, and countless other cases, people in this country, mostly the poor and immigrants in search of the American dream, were demonized and treated like animals in the name of public health. If any of those victims were alive today, they'd be laughing at the immaturity of today's anti-maskers. A 2021 mask mandate doesn't even come close to qualifying as true tyranny or government overreach. A maskaphobe has every right to spread the pandemic of their ignorance as far and as wide as people will put up with their nonsense, but their right to spread the COVID pandemic ends where my or anyone else's respiratory system begins. Those of you who keep voting against a mandate need to educate yourselves and start performing your most basic job requirements. A vote against the mask mandate is a vote against the civil rights of hundreds of thousands of St. Louis County residents and against their right to go about their lives in a manner as free from COVID as humanly possible, a right which, at the moment, can only be achieved through masking. Councilwomen and men, we're still at almost 250 cases per day, and we still need a mask mandate in St. Louis County. Please help save lives when you vote tonight. Thank you.
That is not allowed. One second, Mr., excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir, it's going out the door there.
It's okay, I'm sure. My remarks, if I may, are addressed to the people in the chamber. Last week, you heard me remind you of the remarks of Elizabeth Thierter's hall. I disagree with what you say, but I will defend to the death your right to say it. And I told you then, and I'll tell you again now, the First Amendment and free speech is a two-way street. You don't have to disagree with this last speaker, but you have to allow him to be heard. Now, let me finish, please, let me finish. When you laugh, when you jeer, when you boo, that is not allowing him to be heard. More importantly, you compromise your own credibility when you do so. I would encourage you to remember that free speech is a two-way street. Everyone has a right to be heard. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Tracus, the gentleman has returned. I forgot his last name. First name is David.
I have no questions. I just wanted to make my point.
All right, thank you. Moving right on to...
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Matthew Shepper, followed by Karen Smith.
All right, well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I'm definitely in favor of free speech. I wasn't booing, I wouldn't, I wouldn't boo. And there's a lot of censorship going on in this country. Only one side is actually being censored on Facebook, the other side's never censored. We keep hearing about 200 doctors that are in favor of COVID vaccines. There are many, many, many doctors that have very real concerns. If we could have a real, open debate in this country and there wasn't the censorship and people were allowed to make up their own minds, then let the results prove themselves. I myself had COVID last winter, as did a lot of people that I know, and because we took a different means, we had the vitamin D, we took zinc, had fresh air, had fun, lack of fear, the people that I know that got it had pretty mild cases. I do know a man in his 90s who died of it, and that's, that's always sad. We're all going to die, we're all going to face our Creator. It's going to happen, and that's an inevitability. I want to, I want to say, I'm grateful to be able to speak here. I've watched both you, Ms. Rita Hurd Days and Shalanda Webb, I've seen you on Fox 2, and I'm very grateful. We would disagree, I'm sure, on a lot of political issues, but I've always felt like you really do hear us and listen, and it seems like so much of our liberty that's on the line comes down to your votes on this. I've made my opinion known about the masking mandate and its ineffectiveness. My biggest concern from the beginning with the masks is the masks make us so miserable that people are going to be ready to take the vaccine. And I understand there's many of you, and I believe you believe that it's essential to get information out about the vaccine, but why not have both sides out there presented and then let people make up their own mind? For me, as a Christian pastor at Church of the Word, it actually comes down to an area of conviction. I believe very strongly in the Sixth Commandment not to murder, which is extended as do no harm to yourself or others. I have come to the perspective, for me personally, as an issue of conscience, that vaccines are actually very dangerous. Now, I understand that there are people that disagree with that, but to ask me to inject myself or my children with something that I believe to be dangerous when we're doing very well, taking other means of preventing, I think is an act of violence. I think forced vaccination is an act of violence. So while you're still discussing what's going to happen with the vaccines and you believe that's a solution, I, I hope that you allow for conscientious objectors to opt out. I hear police officers, nurses, other people being forced out of their jobs, willing to lose their jobs over this issue. This is an issue of conscience, and whatever you mandate, whatever comes down the line or whatever, I, I hope you make an allowance for those of us who believe it's an act of self-destruction to do it, because for me...
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
I'll go to jail if I have to, and I don't want to. I will leave the state if I have to, and I don't want to. I'll do whatever it takes. I'm not injecting my children, and it's not just me being stubborn. It's a matter of conviction.
Our next speaker is Karen Smith, followed by Joel Harrell.
Karen Smith, 63119, back again. Shocking that we all have to come back. Everyone heard Ms. Dunaway last week make it very clear that she will keep bringing this up until it passed. Well, if you think that we're going away, we're not going away. We're going to be here, and we will not stand for it, basically. So about six months ago, my husband's sister asked him about what I was involved in. She said, "I had no idea that Karen was a political activist." I'm not a political activist, I'm a freedom activist. That's what I am. So I'm also embarrassed to be a resident of St. Louis County. I'm embarrassed to be a resident of Webster Groves. Our council, our county council, I think that Ms. Webb referenced it, has been a laughing stock last week. Do you know that our council meetings are being seen all over the country and all over the world? There are podcasts with clips from our council meetings that are being shown everywhere, and I'm embarrassed about that. I am, I also was just so disturbed by the total disrespect to the residents and to other council members last week by the way that other council members treated them. I want to read the oath that each elected official has to take when they're elected to office before they take office. This is Code 3331, Oath of Office. An individual, except the president, elected or appointed to an office of honor or profit in the civil service or uniform services, shall take the following oath. I, fill in the blank, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of invasion, that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office on which I am about to enter, so help me God. That is the oath that each one of you took when you took office, and I hope that you are committed to following the Constitution. I brought a copy of that oath, you already know it, now you all know it, and I also brought a copy of the Constitution of the United States. There are eight copies here, I'd like to leave those and have this entered into the
Our next speaker is Joel Harrell, followed by Craig King.
Hi, I'm Joel Harrell, 63123. I'm also embarrassed at St. Louis County as well. My landlord asked me last week if I was interested in buying my rental home, that I've been there for 10 years now, and I said, "I'm not sure, given the takeover by King P..." there for 10 years now, and I said, "I'm not sure, given the takeover by King Page, Princess Dunaway, Princess Clancy. I'm not sure if Trakus wants to be in the royal family or not." This authoritarianism needs to stop. Sam Page couldn't agree on changing one word, one word. Princess Dunaway, thank you for inviting us to come back every single week, too. King Page did wake up a sleeping giant, albeit a below-knee amputee. Please don't go around saying I'm trying to discriminate against disabled people either. Page has tried dividing people by allegations of antisemitism. He's also inciting hate against the African-American community. Please continue to investigate King Page. I think what's going on with King Page is Stinger 2.0. He continues to use fear, but it's falling apart. I love having a front seat to it. And please continue the investigation into Dr. Faisal Khan's racism allegations. I still resent his lies, especially that Americans called him the C-word, and he needs to apologize at the least. How much money's been wasted litigating simple matters like the illegal appointment of Clancy as chair and overturning a mask mandate? The man who compared mask-wearing to civil rights? Well, where's my civil right to not be masked? I don't infringe on you, don't infringe on me. Counsel, please do not allow remote speakers, except when on holiday, like Councilmember Fitch, who pays attention and listens, and was going down to a freedom state, too. The council chambers are a safe environment, and the St. Louis County Police have been nothing short of exemplary. I had to put my leg on, drive here, and wait in line like everyone else. It is uncomfortable, and it should be. I need water as well. No one should be able to sit at home and be comfortable when I'm not. Princess Clancy can bring her constituents to the council if she's so concerned. I do think we need a confession booth for entertainment purposes. This is what happens when people are censored. I want to thank Reverend Darrell Gray for bringing attention to the North County Democrats' propaganda and defending what's right. He's right. We do not have time for plantation games perpetuated by King Page. These individuals want to lock you up for not wearing a mask. Remember them in the next election campaign. They cared about you so much, they didn't even speak tonight. Gwen Reed, Reggie Jones, Karen Pierre, Tom and Pearson, John Bowman, Margot McNeil, Yolanda Fountain Henderson...
Madam Chair, that's three minutes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harrell.
Our next speaker is Craig King, followed by Julie Sanders.
Craig King, 63021. I'd like to encourage this council to hold factual hearings right here in the public on all these issues. I don't believe that we, that you have heard enough in terms of facts behind all the positionings. There's positions on both sides on all these issues, but many are merely wanting you to accept the pronunciation by some expert, and nobody shows the science, nobody shows the studies, nobody proves. I'd like to ask that before any mandates are imposed, that this council conduct open, true hearings, if you will, the council members can cross-examine the witnesses, and this might take a couple of days. You can't do this in 30 minutes. I think you all might learn a great deal by looking at the actual facts. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Julie Sanders, followed by Elizabeth Cohen.
Julie Sanders, 63011. Psalm 82, 3 and 4. Defend the weak and the fatherless; uphold the cause of the poor and the oppressed; rescue the weak and needy; deliver them from the hand of the wicked. This passage is directed to the community leaders, those in authority, but it's my life mission statement. I have a track record of speaking up for the unborn, for orphans, for pregnant women, for single moms, for traumatized and marginalized kids. As far as upholding the cause of the oppressed, to oppress is to press down, to coerce, to use power or authority to make someone act against their will. Your job is to protect those who are oppressed. Your job is to make sure no people group is oppressed. It is the opposite of using your power to coerce a population to do what you want, regardless of our will and our conscience. Here's the deal. I have options. We have been both blessed and responsible with our finances. I work for a great company from home. We're near retirement. If this continues, we can pack up cash and then move out. But I'm here for those people who don't have options. They just can't leave. I'm here for the families who need their jobs and the insurance that comes with it. There are families without margins, living hand-to-mouth, single moms busting their butts to make ends meet. There are teens that aren't working for gas and fun money, they're working to put food on the family table. These people cannot afford to buck your order and get out of town. They are being coerced, forced, to violate their conscience in order to keep a job. I know that you are sincerely trying to do what is best for St. Louis County, but using your authority to impose your will is a violation of our personal sovereignty. An individual's body is sacred. Please do not violate the will of another human being. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Cohen, followed by Jenny Weber.
Elizabeth Cohen, 63005. My husband's going to hand you guys a piece of paper that shows a picture representing the coronavirus along with many other viruses. I think, I think there's like 20 of them on there, or something like that, and it shows in relation to the open fabric of a cloth mask. Cloth masks or coverings are not made according to any standards. The National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health conducted a study of the filter performance on clothing materials. All of the cloth masks had near zero efficiency at 300 nanometers. For perspective, a sheet of paper is 100,000 nanometers thick. The COVID virus is 100 nanometers thick. July 3, 2020, Sam Page mandated masks for the St. Louis County area. We had 134 new cases that day. In the 10 months that the mandate was in effect, the daily cases shot up to a high of 1,155 cases in a day. July 26, 2021, Sam Page once again attempted to initiate a mask mandate. Thankfully, it was stopped, because now our cases are on their way back down. According to the St. Louis County website, quote, "Average rates of new COVID-19 diagnoses decrease in all five regions of the county between August 3 and August 16," end quote. There were 301 cases on July 26. It peaked around 367 cases, and yesterday there were 194. This is clear evidence that a mask mandate is not needed to manage COVID. Here are a few quotes about masks. "A systematic review found no significant effect of face masks on transmission of laboratory confirmed influenza." That's from the CDC. "Disposable cotton or paper masks are not recommended. There is no evidence of protection from cloth masks, and they might facilitate transmission of pathogens when used repeatedly without adequate sterilization." That's a 2017 Oxford study. "The data suggests that both medical and non-medical face masks are ineffective to block human-to-human transmission of viral and infectious disease such as COVID-19. Wearing face masks has been demonstrated to have substantial adverse physiological and psychological effects. These include hypoxia, shortness of breath, increased acidity and toxicity, activation of fear and stress response, rise in stress hormones, immunosuppression, fatigue, headaches, decline in cognitive performance, predisposition for viral and infectious illnesses, chronic stress, anxiety, and depression." That was a Stanford study. And my favorite, "Wearing a mask might make people feel a little better, but it's not providing the protection people think it is, and there's unintended consequences because people keep touching the mask." Anthony Fauci. Also, I wanted to just let you know, a few weeks ago, I went to Missouri Baptist with pneumonia, and once they confirmed it was pneumonia, they did a COVID test, which tested positive, surprising to me, because I didn't have any symptoms. I was now a COVID patient, and I was put on the COVID floor. I just needed supplemental oxygen and rest, but I have become a statistic that is used to instill fear in the citizens of St. Louis County.
Madam Chair, that's three minutes.
I was put in a room very quickly. The COVID floor I was on was not full. The waiting room had four people in it, and only two were with COVID.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.
Our next speaker is Jenny Weber, followed by Richard Dorsey.
Hi, my name is Jenny Weber, 63141. I want to thank the council for letting me speak. I want to thank the members that are here in person to hear our voices, unlike the ones that are on Zoom trying to mute us in real life and on Zoom. I want to start by quoting Dr. Page's press conference yesterday. That's what brought me here. Dr. Page stated, "Masks provide our children the best opportunity at an ideal education this year. In the classroom, our educators can work to eliminate inequities. This is about freedom, the freedom of our children to learn in an ideal environment and reduce the risk of being left behind. Dr. Page, I hope you're listening, because I'm a teacher. Educators cannot eliminate inequities in masks. We cannot tell which children are having a bad day because they didn't have breakfast or because their parents were fighting that morning. Why? Because we can't see their facial expressions. Many kids won't speak up because they are embarrassed. Thank you. I can't see my paper now. Many kids will not speak up because they're embarrassed, or they simply don't have the social-emotional skills to do so. Our job as educators is to seek out these kids by reading their facial expressions, but we can't do that with masks on. How is that equitable? Hard-of-hearing kids can't read their teachers' lips, and their classmates' voices are muffled by masks. How is that equitable? Kids that have speech delays can't see mouths move to make sounds or words. How is that equitable? Kids that are on the autism spectrum and trying to learn social and communication cues of their teachers and peers while wearing masks. Tell me, how that is equitable? I could go on and on about how educating in a mask is not equitable, but I would go way past my three minutes. The fact of the matter is, is that COVID is here to stay. Vaccine is and has been widely available for some time for all those that would like it. We need to move on, and we need to learn to live with it. And the way that we are living is not a life. And to quote you, Dr. Page, this is about freedom, the freedom to live life as we choose it. Now that, Dr. Page, is what I call equitable.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, our final speaker this evening is Richard Dorsey.
Mr. County Executive, Madam Chair, council members, my name is Richard Dorsey, 63034, and I am not here to talk to you about masks or vaccine. I'm here to talk to you about something more mundane: yard waste. My county mandated waste hauler, Waste Connections, has not picked up the yard waste at my home in four of the last six weeks. On Sunday night, I got an automated call saying they wouldn't pick it up this week. I pay for that yard waste service. I called Waste Connections numerous times. Their message always says that they will call back within 24 hours. I have yet to receive a call from Waste Connections. I contacted my county councilperson, Ms. Webb, and she did exactly what a county councilperson should do. She forwarded my complaint to county government. I received a response from a county health department employee that was more of an apologist response than responding to a constituent's concerns. I was told that Waste Connections is suffering labor shortages, that they're suffering shortages due to COVID, they can't get parts for their trucks. In short, I got every excuse from the county except that their dog ate their homework. This is something that is intolerable. I was also told by this county employee I will get a credit on my bill. Well, a credit does not pick up the stinking yard waste at the end of my driveway. The fact of the matter is, the county created this situation when they created these waste districts, and now it's up to the county to solve them. And I would like to propose to you a short-term solution and a long-term solution. The short-term solution is that the county order any waste hauler with a contract that if they cannot fulfill their contractual obligations, that they subcontract the work out to someone who can at no additional cost to the customer. The long-term solution is to repeal these county waste districts, because the fact of the matter is, if they had done this and I had the freedom to fire them, I would have fired them after the first week. But I'm not allowed to do that. The county created these waste districts. The county mandates that I must use their designated hauler, and this is the result. And I would ask this council to look at both these long-term and short-term solutions and provide the service to the constituents that we pay for. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we proceed beyond public forum, I'm compelled to make a statement. It is not without reservation and much deliberation that I've decided that I must speak to an issue concerning public forum that county citizens are entitled to know about before they are presented with a fait accompli. There are members of this council that have, according to a communication summarizing their discussions, have come to, I quote, "preliminary agreements," and quote, "recommendations concerning public forum." These agreements and recommendations include, and I quote, "One, council meetings require masks be worn by all individuals who access the chamber. Two, the distancing measures be enforced..." I'm sorry, "that distancing measures be enforced in the chamber, that social distancing of three feet be required in the chamber. Three, quote, 'confine public forum to the one-hour threshold,' close quote. And last and most importantly, change Rule 5 to limit each individual speaker to two minutes as opposed to three." These agreements and proposals have been reached outside of and without communication with all members of this council. Most importantly, the agreements and proposals demonstrated complete and utter lack of any understanding of the reason behind the three-minute limit for public speaking. Before 2017, the then tyrant of a council chairman limited citizens to one minute during public forum. If they failed to end their statement within that time limit, he had them taken into custody and removed from the chamber. This is why citizens are provided three minutes today versus 2017. My understanding is that the intention behind the agreement and recommendations is that they will be implemented at next week's council meeting. I remind the proponents that there is no mask mandate, and that the circuit court has seen to it that it does not exist. So there is no legal basis for this body to impose a mask mandate or social distancing in this chamber during council meetings. Make no mistake, I will never abide by any such unwarranted and illegal mandate or rule. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Trakus, last week, there was a discussion about changing the rules, and it was somewhat of a heated discussion, because I felt like nobody wanted to compromise. Nobody wanted to come together and talk. And in that hostility, at the end of the statement, I said, "If you would like to talk about this, if we can come to a way that we can address the concerns, with considering the staff members, we should have that discussion." Councilwoman Clancy and myself, both was willing to come together and talk through it. Unfortunately, we wanted to make sure that we disclosed everything that was discussed. Unfortunately, we wanted to make sure that we disclosed everything that was discussed. But unfortunately, sir, some of those things you jumped the gun on because we have come to agreement and given those recommendations to the chair, and she was going to give an opportunity to address the cause. We didn't want to blindside anybody. We was not being deceptive. We was transparent. We talked with our chairwoman. We talked amongst ourselves, and we shared everything with the council. To me, that's working together. That's collaborating. Now, everyone doesn't get everything that they want, but we need to, through this governing body, we have to start working together. Councilwoman Trachis, I apologize if you was not included and you wanted to be included, sir, but maybe we can work on things more in the future, but I did reserve that information for the chairwoman to discuss today.
Thank you. And let me just say that these are, as you look at the title, it's themes from discussion from public forum. So nothing has been determined. These are the issues that, if I'm mistaken, you make sure, Councilwoman Webb, that I am corrected. These are the things that were to be considered. Nothing has been determined at this particular point. I am still looking at this and taking under advisement many of these. I too was concerned about the limitation, particularly of the minutes. I believe that the three minutes is sufficient for people to have those kinds of discussions. But the other issues in this document have not been decided. We have not decided to move forward. This is why I sent the document to each and every member of this council. So if there is input that you need, input that you want, the two people that are guiding this discussion, Councilwoman Clancy, Councilwoman Webb, Councilwoman Trachis, if you choose to join that, please feel free. Councilwoman Trachis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Make no mistake, this is all about chilling free speech. It is all about limiting the public's right to speak truth to power. I will not lie down on this. I will die on this hill. I can promise you that. I will not sit by, I don't care if it means filing another lawsuit, but this body will not impose an illegal mandate on the public to chill free speech. So if you want a war, you will get it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Councilwoman Webb? I understand Councilwoman Trachis' passion.
No, you don't.
Okay. Now, Councilwoman Trachis? Councilwoman Trachis, I've always been respectful to everyone on this council, no matter whether they are respectful to me or not. I understand your passion, sir, but we also have business to attend to. We want to make sure that whatever rules, in fact, we're not even changing the rules. That's how you misspoke, sir.
That's what your document says, ma'am.
No, that document said, this is the document that actually captured all of the feedback. We did not curden any other feedback that we discussed because we wanted to disclose all of it to everybody. So we got to not be short-sighted here as an audience, as leaders, but just because you don't get everything that you want, you cannot stop the process of compromise. We want to collaborate and work together, and not only when it's convenient for you or it's on the same topic that you want it to be on, but for everything. So let me be clear, sir. If you want to down that hill, go for it. All right, move it. Councilwoman Trachis?
We are here about the people's business, not our business, the people's business. And part of the people's business, part of the people's business is the opportunity to be heard on issues that are important to them. Any attempt to limit their right to speak truth to power has to be viewed with great concern. And I didn't misquote, it says flat out, "Change Rule 5 to limit individual speakers to two minutes." That's what the document says.
It was the suggestion we gave.
Let me finish, please.
Okay, I'm sorry, because I don't want to be rude to you, sir. I'm going to follow your head.
So, again, this is all very convenient and pretextual and couched in terms of safety, and let's focus on what the council's business is. The business is the people's business. They have a right to be heard. Limiting public forum to one hour when we have important matters to be heard is inappropriate and uncalled for. Requiring limits on the number of people that can come into this room has no basis legally or factually at this point. Likewise, there's no business that's legal with respect to requiring people to enter this room and wear masks. I will never wear a mask until a court orders me to do so, and I don't think anyone in this room should be ordered to do so either. So I've just, you and I disagree profoundly on this point, and so game on.
Madam Chair? Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Councilwoman Trachis, I want us to be that example to the public and to St. Louis County. We can disagree, we can disagree strongly, but we do not have to be disrespectful, we do not have to be malice towards each other. That's what we need to practice here on this council. So, Councilwoman Trachis, I will invite you to the next meeting so you can have your voices heard, your voice heard, and then we will make those same recommendations to the chairwoman, and then she can make a decision.
So it was respectful to have your private meeting until it was exposed, and now it's okay to invite others, is that it?
No, sir, we was open about that. You were very open about it, but okay, I understand. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Moving right along, thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Clancy?
I'm sorry, to interject here, I just wanted to say that I want everyone to understand this came about as a result of the discussion at the last council meeting. At the end of the meeting, I'm not sure how many folks were still in the chamber and heard all of this, but Councilwoman Webb and I had an exchange where we agreed to talk rather quickly after the meeting to talk about a compromise. And so that's what this all came about from. This is all qualified at the beginning of this document by saying, "These are simply recommendations and things we want to discuss further and are things that we could possibly act upon." And I also want to acknowledge how much I appreciated Councilwoman Webb putting, making this meeting happen, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with her on some compromises here. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Count Executive Page?
Good evening. Yesterday, many of our schools opened their doors to students for the first time in 18 months. Being in the classroom is the ideal setting, and I'm glad that our kids are getting back to in-person learning. It's a different time now. We know that masks work to prevent the spread of the virus, and we know we have a vaccine for anyone 12 and over to ensure that our schools can remain open and that the vaccine will keep our kids, their parents, and teachers from getting seriously ill. I want to thank all the school districts who put in place a mask requirement to protect their students and staff from harm. It's the right thing to do. Back-to-school events this year included vaccine clinics. The Department of Public Health brought the COVID-19 shots to a place where students and parents would naturally be. The health department's comprehensive vaccination plan includes teaming up with school districts, fire departments, community groups, and businesses across the county to make getting a vaccine as easy as possible. As Spring Schmidt, the Deputy Director of Health, said last week, "We're making gains in zip codes where vaccine rates are the lowest. We put resources where they're needed the most, and this is an equitable approach to public health and the way our health department will continue to respond to this pandemic." We've worked with our media partners to run ads on TV, radio, and in newspapers featuring members of our community encouraging vaccinations, and we're pulling out all the stops to get more people vaccinated. That includes tapping into the power of the media to change their hearts and minds. I understand the confusion around public health orders. Local control was the preferred response by the state leaders until it wasn't. Those who don't respect or support public health decided they needed to change the rules midway through a pandemic and put every resident in danger. What has been heartening is that the overwhelming majority of you are doing what's right, protecting others. You're wearing a mask, you're getting vaccinated. Thank you, I stand with you. Yesterday, the FDA granted full approval to the Pfizer vaccine, and hopefully, this will encourage more of our hesitant friends and neighbors to get vaccinated. More and more communities across the region are putting in place mask requirements so that the spread of the virus can be slowed until we get more people vaccinated. While the vaccine is widely accessible, it's not yet approved for our children under 12, and that's why mask requirements are so critical. Please listen to the healthcare professionals. The universal message is this: Masks must be worn until we get more people vaccinated. And this is not an either-or, and those who push back against mask requirements are putting our children in danger. As a medical doctor, I see no rational reason for not doing whatever is necessary to curb the virus. Wearing a mask is easy and effective. Masks save lives. Masks provide our children the best opportunity at an ideal education this year. And in the classroom, our educators can work to eliminate inequities. Our teachers can identify challenges students are facing and can provide a more successful path for all of our kids. And masks provide the freedom for all of our children to learn in an ideal environment and reduce the risk of being left behind. The county council has another opportunity tonight to demonstrate that the welfare of all of our residents is a priority, and putting in place a mask requirement until more people get vaccinated is the right thing to do. This is an opportunity to get together on the same page, share the same message, and curb the virus once and for all. That's all for now, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to perfection, introduction of bills.
Yes, Madam Chair. Bill number 243, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a Missouri crime lab upgrade program grant of up to $64,514 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of forensic scientists and equipment and software for the crime lab, and authorizing the county executive and the superintendent of police to execute necessary documents. Bill number 244, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a 2021 multi-jurisdictional drug task force grant of up to $283,761.53 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of the St. Louis County multi-jurisdictional drug task force, and authorizing the county executive and the superintendent of police to execute necessary documents. Bill number 245, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a 2022 state cyber crime grant of up to $240,000 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, subject to matching requirements, appropriating the same for support of the salary and benefits of three detectives who investigate crimes that exploit children, and authorizing the county executive and the superintendent of police to execute necessary documents. Bill number 246, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to accept reimbursements related to the state investment in local public health services project, appropriating funds received pursuant to said contract, and authorizing the director of the Department of Public Health to execute necessary documents. Bill number 247, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for support of the Department of Public Health's COVID-19 and Adult Vaccination Supplemental Project, appropriating the grant funds and authorizing the director of the Department of Public Health to execute necessary documents. Bill number 248, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance amending ordinance number 26,911 as amended by repealing and reenacting Section 1 pertaining to a lease with Clarkson-Wilson Investors LLC for space at Clarkson-Wilson Center for use as a West County government center. Bill number 249, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance amending Title 5, Chapter 502, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance as 1974 is amended, levying collection of taxes by reenacting one new, excuse me, by enacting one new section to be known as 502.655 pertaining to payment to the recorder of deeds by credit card. Bill number 250, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $500,000 from the unappropriated balance of Fund 6980, grant ARPA-1, for support of extending a contract with Deloitte and Touche LP, Deloitte to incorporate services relating to compliance with the American Rescue Act of 2021, ARPA, pertaining to expenditure of ARPA funds received by St. Louis County. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the sections. Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number 20 is held. Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to hold, Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held. Bill number 75, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold Bill number 75.
Bill number 75 is held. Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 77, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 77.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 77 is held. Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 88.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 88 is held. Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Daze. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill. Please read the substitute.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 139, introduced by Councilmember Daze, an ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $1,857,600 from the unappropriated balance of Fund 6980, grant ARPA-1, ARPA fund as provided herein, and providing for establishment of special pay programs for certain employees of the Department of Justice Services, subject to the provisions set forth herein and approval by the Civil Service Commission.
Thank you very much. Let me just briefly say a little bit about this. We have been working very hard. The Justice Services Corrections Officers have been having difficulty in getting people to apply for the jobs as well as to keep them. So because we have the ARPA money, we were looking at some avenue in which they could get some kind of extra money for joining the forces over there or staying with the forces. The initial ask was for $2 an hour for this, and many of us felt that that was not sufficient to get the numbers where we wanted them to be. So we have worked with members of this council to try to pull together this substitute bill and hopefully to address many of the issues that they face. We started out with looking at three different avenues for that: a signing bonus, a referral bonus, as well as a milestone paid. And we came to the conclusion that we could do the signing bonus, that was allowed, we could do the milestone pay. However, the referral bonus was a little difficult and more challenging. So what we decided to do was move forward with the two entities that we have there and work on the third one. I did talk about, the first component of the bill would be to provide from ARPA to pay a $500 signing bonus to corrections officers. There are about 229 of those. And the community corrections officers, there's about 11 of those, who complete 90 days of employment without any disciplinary actions. At this time, I'm going to, I would like to move this forward to final passage if that is amenable to the council, because they have been waiting for quite some time for us to make a decision on that. With that, I would like to adopt the substitute, Substitute Bill number, Substitute number 1 for Bill number 139. I move for the adoption of that. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. At this particular point, I would like to move to perfect Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 139. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. For those opposed, no. Motion carries. I move to suspend the rules in order to advance... I'm sorry, did someone wanted to speak there? Okay. I move to suspend the rules in order to advance Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 139 to the final passage order of business. Second?
Second.
Roll, any discussion? Roll call, please. Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Madam Chair, I know we're in the middle of votes, but I do want to acknowledge that we all worked on this, Councilman Fitch, Councilwoman Clancy, myself, and you all worked together. Again, this is trying to exhibit to our community that we know how and we'll work together. With that being said, aye.
Thank you. I wanted to make that statement when we moved for final passage and let everyone have an opportunity to do that. So, yes, ma'am, thank you. So, thank you.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, on the motion to suspend the rules in order to advance Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 139 to the final passage order of business, there are seven ayes.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. Now, I would like to move for final passage of Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 139. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Councilman Fitch.
I would just like to echo what Councilwoman Webb said. I enjoyed working with the other members on this particular bill, and I will say it still doesn't go far enough, and I think we all recognize that. So hopefully to the Department of Justice Services that may be out there monitoring or listening or watching this, that they know we're not finished. This is a start.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Councilwoman Harder?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that, agree with that, and also let the public know that we have over 70 job openings in the Justice Center across the street, and we have over 900 prisoners sitting over there. And we're at a point that it can be very dangerous to get any lower than that. And that's the motivation, one of the motivations of moving this and moving it fast tonight. We want to get these people to stay, and we want to recruit more justice service people that want to be jailers. So if you have any brothers, sisters, grandmothers, anybody who wants to be a jailer, we're taking applications here in the lobby after this meeting. So we need people, and people that want to dedicate themselves to the justice system and to making sure that people are treated fairly in our system and that they act in a safe manner, and everyone's protected. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And no, we are not taking applications in the lobby. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 139, there are seven ayes.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 139 is finally passed, and thank you all very much for that. Moving on.
Bill number 156, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Bill number 156.
Bill number 156 is held.
Bill number 201, introduced by Councilmember Days. I move to hold Bill number 201. Bill number 201 is held. Bill number 202, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please, oh, actually, I will drop this from the order of business since we just passed the Substitute Bill pertaining to this issue, so you can drop Bill number 202, please.
Thank you very much. Bill number 202 is dropped from the order of business.
Bill number 228, introduced by Councilmember Webb.
I said we hold Bill number 228.
Bill number 228 is held.
Bill number 229, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 229. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 229 is perfected.
Bill number 230, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 230. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 230 is perfected.
Bill number 231, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 231. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 231 is perfected.
Bill number 232, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 232. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 232 is perfected.
Bill number 233, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 233. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 233 is perfected.
Bill number 234, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for to perfect Bill number 234.
Is there a second? All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 234 is perfected.
Bill number 235, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway, Webb, Tracus, and Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 235.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Dunaway.
I said I move to perfect Bill number 235.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I heard some strangest noise. Is there a second?
Second.
Some feedback. I'm hearing feedback.
I know.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 235 is perfected.
Bill number 236, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 236. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 235, 236, I'm sorry, is perfected.
Bill number 237, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 237. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 237 is perfected.
Bill number 238, introduced by Council, excuse me, Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 238. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 238 is perfected.
Bill number 239, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 239. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Bill number 239 is perfected.
Bill number 240, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Can we hold on the substitute bill for a minute? I have something I'd like to say, if that's all right. Yesterday, my second grader-
Councilwoman Dunaway, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yesterday, my second grader and fourth grader went back to school full-time for the first time in a year and a half. They are seven years old and nine years old, and are not yet eligible for the vaccine. Like tens of thousands of other St. Louis County parents, we sent our unprotected kids back, even with COVID numbers and severity arise in children, inside a community with a twisted sense of freedom without any responsibility for one another and without mask mandates. And we're doing it because we sincerely, genuinely, and with deep, deep regret, feel that we don't have a choice. For a year and a half, sometimes part-time, sometimes full-time, we've been teacher's aide, lunch lady, bus driver, school nurse, guidance counselor, referee, and timekeeper while our children learned math, and reading, and art, and music on a computer screen at the dining room table. This was while we were also managing our own job, or some parents like me, jobs with an S. And that's if we were lucky enough to be able to stay in the workforce at all. When we saw the light at the end of the tunnel at the beginning of this summer, when masks became a thing of the past, while the pandemic slithered into obscurity with the arrival of vaccines and outdoor weather, we turned a corner we cannot unturn, and we must now find a way to live life again. And yet, here we are: COVID hospitalizations ticking upward and ICU beds dwindling. People are dying. The St. Louis County healthcare community is united in its plea to max up, mask up, vaccinate, and stop this virus from taking and maiming lives. More children are hospitalized, living with damaging consequences of long COVID, and dying at higher rates than ever before in this pandemic. And unprotected, unvaccinated, we sent them back, reliant on masks at least in the schools, a mandate currently under attack by the state's attorney general who just today announced, who just announced today he would try to take away a school board's authority to issue mask mandates. Parents like, parents like me, desperate to protect our children's lives and futures, also battle with our own need to once again focus on our own careers, our own lives, our own passions. Our children need to do the same in school, where they belong, and where they're wearing a mask to keep themselves, their friends, and their teachers safe from a deadly disease. We are hearing reports of thousands of quarantines in schools around the country, schools even shutting down over outbreaks. Don't we want to do everything we can to prevent that from happening here? If our children can wear a mask all day long, the grownups can put one on too. If the children don't like it, they suck it up and do it anyway because they'd rather be living out there at school than at home stuck inside. If the grownups don't like it, they can do the same: shut up, mask up, and set a better example of kindness and caring for our community. For weeks, this council has listened to the cries of "freedom for the entitled" and against the advice of healthcare professionals have voted away mask mandates. Now it's time to listen to the parents of young children not yet eligible for the vaccine. You see, we are no longer at our breaking point. We are broken. We have had to choose to send our kids back at any cost while grownups are more spoiled than any children I know and refuse to put on a mask without a mandate. Our unvaccinated children are back indoors all day, every day, and we need a mask mandate to help keep them there. As I understand it, we are having a hearing Thursday on masks. And because I want to sincerely give everyone a chance to consider that testimony and hearing why the healthcare professionals are seeking a mask mandate, I will hold this bill tonight. But I cannot let this go. Our community needs a mask mandate. It's one of the few tools we have to keep our kids safe and in schools, and until more of our community is vaccinated and our children become eligible. Thank you, Madam Chair. And with that, I move to hold Bill number 240.
Bill number 240 is held.
Bill number 241, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold Bill number 241.
Bill number 241 is held.
One moment, Madam Chair. Bill number 242, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold Bill number 242.
Bill number 242 is held. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Webb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope all of us who are in the audience today and those who are watching online, I never try to judge someone's heart. I really try to listen to them and talk so we can work together. And whether it's easy or hard, whether we agree or disagree, as Councilwoman Tracus and I have said, showed you this afternoon, we want to show that we can work together, that we don't have to be ugly towards one another. Whether we agree or disagree, Councilwoman Dunaway shared her heart with us, and she's willing to compromise and come to the table. And that's all we asked from her from the very beginning. So I want us to all be respectful, let us go through that process of the committee to hold on Thursday, and work through it. You say you want working government, you want respectful government. Allow us to go through this process. And again, we're not trying to blindside you all. We want to be open and transparent so that you all know what the process is and you all have that feedback. Councilwoman Dunaway, I thank you because we reached out to each other and to each other on this council to see if we can work together. Now I ask you as the public to allow us to do that. Allow us to do our job, to work, to collaborate, to compromise, to work together. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilwoman Dunaway.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? I just want to say that early, I think that was on Monday, that we had an hour and a half conversation with the county executive. We had an agreement that the county executive had endorsed. However, we still are without a path going forward on these masks. The court suggested that we work together. The council members are trying to work together. Councilwomen Clancy, Webb, and I are making good faith efforts to move forward. What is the bottleneck? Perhaps it is my legislative experience that leads me to think that compromise is the best outcome. We are looking for a comprehensive approach to dealing with the pandemic. One size fits all is not the solution. This approach includes vaccinations, masks, and addressing comorbidity issues which run rampant in our community. Personal attacks, unfounded accusations, and failure to compromise are not helpful. So please recognize that the judge even stated there are two co-equal branches of government that disagree with each other, but they all should be respected. So let's put, let's decrease the rhetoric, let's bring down and stop the temper tantrum, let's come to the table in good faith and help the citizens of St. Louis County regain some sense of normalcy. I am committed to working with each of you to make sure that this happens, but we have to operate in good faith on all of these points. So thank you. Moving on to, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Harder.
Madam Chair, I think Councilwoman Webb talked about having this meeting on Thursday that's still on the schedule, correct?
I believe so, yes.
At 4 o'clock, and that meeting is to sit down with the county executive and the health department to discuss these items, correct?
I'm not sure if the county executive will be there, but I believe his health people will be there.
So it'll be here in the chamber?
Councilman, I'm sorry, county executive, are you planning to attend or just send your health people?
No, I'll send public health experts to answer your questions, but I'll certainly be watching, and we'll get a report.
Okay, thank you.
So that is going to be here at 4 o'clock?
No, that will not be here. That will be virtual, I believe. Yes, it will be virtual.
So this hearing will be virtual?
That is correct.
Okay. Will citizens be able to participate?
They will not. We will be here so that we can hear the information, we can talk, we can go back and forth with the experts, figure out what they're having to say. I think we have heard three weeks of folks, we have an idea of what they are telling us, and will we keep that in our banks? We already have those records, so that's good. So we'll want to hear again. The law requires, if we recall House Bill 271, I believe it was, the law requires that the county executive discuss these issues with us before he issues any kinds of health mandates. And that's what this exercise will allow us to do.
Okay. Will there be a vote of any kind at that meeting?
I am not planning on a vote of any kind.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Webb, did you have something to say?
No, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further, Councilwoman Tracus?
Thank you. For the record, and so it's clear, this hearing was first, the idea of this hearing was first approached, to my knowledge, yesterday, late in the day, when an email was circulated amongst the council to determine who might be available on Thursday at 4 o'clock for said meeting or hearing. Secondly, you've referred to experts. I'd like to know from where these experts are coming from and at whose request.
County Executive Page, you might want to answer that.
Thank you. We are planning to send our leadership of the Department of Public Health to present their data similar to the letter you received last week and answer any questions.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Tracus.
Thank you.
You still have a floor.
Thank you. So for the record, I have solicited and have obtained an expert that I am requesting be allowed to present to the council at this hearing. I will provide the name and contact information this evening or tomorrow morning. But I believe that in order for us to have the whole picture, certainly it won't hurt us to hear from another certainly qualified expert with respect to the efficacy of masking.
Absolutely, Councilwoman Tracus. Thank you so kindly. Councilwoman Fitch?
Madam Chair, I did not hear the county executive say who from the Department of Health will be there.
Oh. County Executive?
Dr. Khan in Springschmidt.
Do you have anything to say? Any further discussion on that?
One last thing.
Councilwoman Harder?
Madam Chair, if we do have people are-
Madam Chair, if we do have people, our experts that want to testify, how do we go about getting them on the agenda?
I think that you can just check with my office and we can get the names of those people to see if they're available.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number 320 introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold Bill number 320.
Bill number 320 is held.
Bill number 14 introduced by Councilmembers Trakus, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number 14, please.
Bill number 14 is held.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76 introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 204 introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move to hold Bill number 204. Bill number 204 is held.
Bill number 191 introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill number 191. Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 191, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 191 is finally passed.
Bill number 220 introduced by Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of Bill number 220.
Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 220, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 220 is finally passed.
Bill number 221 introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill number 221. Is there a second? Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy? Madam Chair, on Bill number 221, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 221 is finally passed.
Bill number 222 introduced by Councilmember Daze, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fitch.
Moment, please. I move for final passage of Bill number 222.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy? Madam Chair, on Bill number 222, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 222 is finally passed.
Bill number 223 introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 223.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 223, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 223 is finally passed.
Bill number 224 introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill number 224. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 224, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 224 is finally passed.
Bill number 225 introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill number 225. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 225, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 225 is finally passed.
Bill number 226 introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill number 226. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 226, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 226 is finally passed.
Bill number 227 introduced by Councilmember Daze.
I move for final passage of Bill number 227. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 227, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 227 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have two resolutions remaining this evening. Resolution number one introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Councilmember Harder?
Please read the first part of that.
Just tell me when you want me to stop, sir. Resolution, whereas Dennis Alexander Cassani was born in 1941 to Mike and Ann Cassani, each of whom was the child of parents who immigrated to America from Italy. Ann, whereas in 1957, Dennis Cassani's father opened Cassani's Cafe on the Hill where they served St. Louis-style ribs, beef sandwiches, and Italian hamburgers for over 20 years. Ann, whereas while living in an apartment over and helping out in his family's restaurant, Dennis Cassani developed a passion for cooking. Ann, whereas in 1962, Dennis stepped away from completing his Bachelor of Architecture degree at Kansas State University to help out the family business after his father passed away. Ann, whereas when Dennis chaired the Hill Day Festival, an ethnic neighborhood celebration, he learned that food brings people together and developed a passion for making meals that were appealing to all of his senses, including his famous baby shower farfalle and retirement party rigatoni. Ann, whereas Dennis later earned a Master of Architecture from Cran Book Academy of Art in 1968, and throughout his life worked in multiple architectural firms such as HAD Architects, Gray Design Group, and Henderson Group and Interior Space Incorporated, focusing on commercial buildings in St. Louis and other buildings around the world. Ann, whereas Dennis was an active member of the faith community at St. Clair Viscici Church, where he lent his architectural talents to church building projects and was a parishioner for 45 years and a member of the St. Clair Viscici Men's Club. Ann, whereas Dennis served on numerous professional boards, including the National Board of the International Interior Design Association, and the Advisory Board of the University of Missouri Columbia, was chairman of the St. Louis American Institute of Architects Interiors Committee, and most recently was included, excuse me, inducted into the McBride High School Hall of Fame for his architectural accomplishments. Ann, whereas Dennis was appointed to the St. Louis County Public Transportation Commission in December 2012 and was a commissioner until his passing on July 19, 2021. Ann, whereas the St. Louis County Public Transportation Commissioners remembered Dennis for his commitment to helping the people of St. Louis County get where they need to go safely, as well as for his wonderful sense of humor. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council mourns the loss of Dennis Alexander Cassani and extends its deepest condolences to his family, excuse me, to his wife of 55 years, Carolyn, as well as the rest of his family, his friends, his colleagues, and all who have been touched and inspired by him. Section 2, the County Council expresses its deepest gratitude for Mr. Cassani's many years of dedication and service to the county as a member of the Public Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Kevin. I move to pass resolution number, is it one? Resolution number one.
Is there a second? Question? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries. Resolution number one is adopted.
Our final resolution this evening, Madam Chair. Resolution number three introduced by Councilmembers Clancy, Daze, Dunaway, and Webb.
Please read the resolution.
Resolution, whereas recent events in Afghanistan have created a humanitarian crisis as thousands of Afghan citizens have evacuated or attempting to evacuate their country. Ann, whereas it was recently reported that the United States Department of State has approved at least 34,500 special immigrant visas, SIVs, for Afghan citizens who assisted the United States military over the past two decades as translators, clerks, contractors, and community leaders. Ann, whereas such persons would be in grave danger if they remain in Afghanistan. Ann, whereas on August 17, 2021, County Executive Sam Page and Tashar Jones, Mayor of the City of St. Louis, issued a joint statement which stated, quote, "St. Louis City and St. Louis County together are ready to welcome at least 1,000 Afghan citizens through the SIV program, and we will work with our community partners to support any additional migration to the region by Afghan families and friends to help with reunification efforts," end quote. Ann, whereas as expressed by County Executive Page and Mayor Jones, the council believes that the skills, talents, and culture that the SIV holders will bring to the St. Louis region will benefit and enhance our entire community. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the County Council welcomes the Afghan citizens who will settle in the St. Louis region through the SIV program, as well as Afghan families and friends who will migrate to the St. Louis region to help with reunification efforts, and encourages all persons in our community to foster a welcoming environment for our new neighbors.
Thank you, Kevin. It's been encouraging to see our region come together in many ways, although early in the process, to welcome Afghani refugees here to St. Louis City and County. And it is my hope that those who choose to make St. Louis home or to even pass through will find that it is a great place to live, work, and play, and I hope that they know that we are all at their service. So with that, I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Trakus?
Aye.
Councilmember Daze?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number three, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries. Resolution number three is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Madam Chair. Item number one.
Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two, 7th District.
Please hold.
So ordered. Item number three, hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. Item number four. Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the motion for five, six. I'm sorry, four and five. Thank you. You're welcome. Item number six, 6th District.
County Council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered. Item number seven. Please hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. Moving on to new business, Madam Chair, we have four prepared orders. Our first prepared order in the matter of communication from Greg Tater, Director of Procurement, and Jennifer Keating, Acting Director of Administration, requesting authorization to dispose of certain personal property.
I move for adoption of order number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Order number one is adopted.
Prepared order number two in the matter of donation of various items in support of the Kathy J. Weinman Shelter.
I move for adoption of order number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 No. Motion carries. Order number two is adopted.
Prepared order number three in the matter of donation of St. Louis Cardinals baseball tickets for use by the Department of Public Health.
I move for adoption of order number three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 No. Order number three is adopted.
Prepared order number four in the matter of the Director of Revenue's request to transfer all interest in certain real estate bought by him as trustee at the Collector's 2001 Tax Sale.
I move for adoption of order number four.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Order number four is adopted. Any other matters to come before the council at this particular time? Councilman Harder?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Before walking into the meeting this afternoon, this evening, I received a letter, let me go back a little bit. We've been working on a project with the Department of Corrections. The state of Missouri has been in arrears to the tune of almost $1 million to our Department of Corrections at the jail across the street, and that's been an ongoing problem for a number of years with kind of a rolling reimbursement or non-reimbursement from time to time for that money. And I've been working with the Governor's Office and others in the Department of Corrections, and I'm proud to announce that we are getting all of our $1,002,000 back, and it came in, it'll be coming in the next couple of days. So that will help us in the jail and to balance some of the budgets over there and being able to provide the programs that we provide over in the jail without having to cut back knowing that the state is in arrears for their bills.